Okay. I think I'm finally ready to start now that I've got my paperwork here. We'll start with the pledge. Shane, would you please go first?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its midst.
Thank you. Okay, so the, uh... The only other thing on here is public comment. We're gonna hold that back for now and we'll go to item over on the agenda, which is the discussion of the interlocal agreement with Summit County regarding EMS services. So it would also include the fire districts. So, um, I will give a real brief kind of background. Actually, there's probably somebody here who can give a better background, but this has been an ongoing discussion for quite some time about, uh, increasing delivery service for EMS. Who takes that over? Who administers it? What's the best way to do that so that the citizens of, uh, not only Francis, but all of the cities in Eastern Summit County have the level of service that they need? So that's historically been contracted through Park City Fire for, I guess, since about 2013. And then there's been some, some concerns that were brought up in about 2019, and then it was taken to the COG where things started to be discussed, then the pandemic, and then there was a, what's the study? Like a study group that was set up, including some mayors, the district, um, council from Summit County, things like that, to study and figure out what, what's going on, what's the best way to handle this, how can we better do that? They've entered a contract with a independent company who then conducted the study of their own to figure out what's the best option. Several were presented, um, and then now we've kind of broken that down to where we are now, where we have a proposal that the districts take over EMS in the fire districts, and then with some help from Summit County to fund some of those things. And then, um, for right now, South Summit Fire District would then have to contract with either Park City or another district in order to provide some more advanced EMS care until they're able to kind of get up and running and provide those things within the district. Any of that inaccurate?
That looks like pretty good.
All right. So where we are today is, is the districts and county, we're kind of at a point where there's an interlocal agreement that's been drafted, uh, that the city will be asked to enter into this interlocal agreement with the county and the district and agree to how this is all gonna run and how this is all gonna be set up. So the, the proposal, if you've had a chance to look at it, is that Summit County would, from the general fund, correct, provide a... Maybe I could just turn this part over to you, Shane.
I'm ready.
Please do that.
Over there?
Yes, please. So I'll just, I'll just let Shane explain this part along with Dave. Where else can you jump in?
Can you turn this on at all, or is it...
Um, we probably should. That way the recorder's picking up better.
If your light green, then that's off.
Well, maybe not.
I think it is, no. Uh, Mayor, thank you. That's a great introduction and, uh, appreciate you being mayor and council and letting me come tonight and just answer maybe any questions you might have if I can answer them or get us to the right spot if we can't. Shane Scott, I'm six months into being the Summit County manager. We placed Tom Fisher and, uh, I'm happy to be here. Love this area. I'm from Utah, actually originally from St. George, but spent a fair amount of time up here, probably like the rest of Utah, recreating. And since I'm from St. George, I can say that, because you probably folks could probably come down sometimes too. As much as you hate growing here, I hate down there. So, uh, but I appreciate it. Letting us come tonight. I'll mention just a few things, Mayor, if that's okay. You did a great job. I think that, uh, there's a, there was a bill, HP 303, you may have heard of it, with the Summit County legal team. When that came out, discussed, feels like the cities and the county both have responsibility for writing EMS services. I think this option is a good one because it doesn't really put any of the financial burden on the cities. At least for the proposal right now, the office of the House is contingent upon the council being adopting it. But right now, I think we have a lot of consensus to do fire and EMS both through the, in three different fire districts and for the county to, to fund that. One of the key parts of this proposal is for the county to fund equally a countywide basic service. So the ability for the county to use general funds is such that we able to... We say we're able to do that because we can use this countywide basic levels to provide an ambulance in North Summit, an ambulance in South Summit, and one ambulance in Park City that will be funded by the county. Obviously, Park City, uh, has, has more ambulances than that, and anything above what the county's funding, they'd be responsible to fund on their own, which they are already doing now. So I think that's one of the great things about this proposal is if North Summit or South Summit says, "I don't think that the basic level of services being funded by the county is enough," you're able to ramp that up with your own tax abilities within your fire districts. I think a lot of your fire folks would say that fire and EMS go well together. That's something that's a, that's an important part of this proposal. That's why I work for two different cities, and that's the way we do it in those cities. There's a lot of cross-training and economies of scale that can be done when you, when you provide both EMS and fire services from the same organization. So those are kind of the, um, the, uh, the facts so far. I'm gonna just look at my notes here, just to make sure I fill any gaps, Mayor, that you have not mentioned. One of the important parts of this is that we're asking all the cities to acknowledge this proposal with an interlocal agreement. And I have that, I provide that, provide that to Mayor Foreman tonight, and it's probably needs a little bit of tweaking before you adopt it. What we're trying to do is be really respectful of the fire districts in a timing perspective. We want to have this up in line by January 1st, and it's a very aggressive timeline. If we're going to do this by 2024, the, the fire districts need to do a lot. They need to get the buildings in order, they need to hire folks maybe, they need to do a lot of the logistics that would make that an operational, um, reality. So, um, but I think, Mayor, you've mentioned it real well, this district operates the EMS system within their respective fire district. North Summit has already expressed an interest in, in taking that on, and they feel that they're up to that, they're probably just hired to, that they're, they're ready to do that. And I think there's still some, um, questions about South Summit and what, what the fire district wants to do. I think, however, this proposal makes a, makes some accommodations for that. I think that South Summit can contract, as Mayor said, with Park City or North Summit, or technically can probably contract with anybody they wanted to provide the service. But if they can do that, it's already, and that, that may be next year, that may be 10 years, that may be never, but they can contract for that service and could continue to do so as long as they need to be. So I think, um, I think this, with this proposal, the worst-case scenario is you're going to get the same level of service you have today, which, Mayor, may not happen. And that, and that's probably an issue that we continue to need to, need to discuss. But ultimately, I'm hoping that as a, as a city, you have a district that is local to you, that can answer to you. If you don't like the service, rather than going to Park City and getting mad at them, you go to South Summit and get mad at them. And I think there's a lot of power and, um, a lot of benefits to that. Now, Mr. Yur may disagree with that, because he may be the one yelling that out, and maybe he won't be. But I think he was kind enough to come tonight, and he's got, uh, he's able to answer some questions if you have them, of the, specifically for the district. I think, I probably have other things I could say. I could go into some of the work hours here, where Mayor Fittie did a good job with that, and, uh, I think this is a, as we talked about, we talked about several issues, we talked about the, uh, several of our options, we talked about the, you mentioned the safety tech, did a study. This is not our preferred method. They added another recommendation that we're actually going away from. I think there's still some, some real good things that came out of that study, but right now, we're, we're recommending more of the fire chief model, which you know, of, of providing EMS services. Maybe one other thing, paramedic rescue services would still be run by Park City Fire. That's a, that's a dip, that's a level up from your EMS, and most of you probably understand how that works, but, but the paramedic is a different license than the EMS license. EMS for transport can do a lot of your major calls, but there are a few that the paramedics need to do, and I think that paramedic rescue would come out of one shape, if I'm not mistaken, and would still respond to the, to the alternative districts. So with that, I'll shut up, and you can fire some questions for, for me, or Mr. Yur, or each other.
Shane, yes, why don't you explain the million dollars of what the county's putting in equally to the board?
So, so, uh, there's a million dollars is, is the number that we got from the chiefs that said, "That's about the cost of a fire," I'm sorry, of an ambulance stacked 24/7, 365, in each location. One ambulance in North Summit, one in South Summit, and one in Park City. So that's $3 million that the county would be paying for it under the general fund. Another 1.2 million is the cost of the paramedic. So that's a 4.2-ish number that, that would be, um, funded by the, by, by Summit County. Right now, we're paying, I think it's about 1.8 to 1.9 million to Park City Fire for the, for an ambulance in North Summit and ambulance in South Summit. So this is a tremendous increase to, to the county, but, but also I think there's a general consensus that this is our responsibility, we want, we want to take this on. Anything there I didn't mention?
Why don't you go a little bit on a detail what you think that what maybe will buy as far as, uh, the maintenance of the events, the repairs, and also the, the personnel, the employees?
Yes.
So much for a shift, or however.
I, I don't have a lot of specific numbers. I do want to, want to mention that the, also another, um, another detail of this plan would be for Summit County to phase in new ambulances in each district. I think we're gonna start with North Summit, then South Summit, then Park City for new ambulances. The million dollars gets, gets you two ambulances, and those fully stocked, and then it's that 24/7, um, personnel. There is a, there's a cost of living increase in there, that's built into that, that would take place over time. But the idea is to fund simply the basic level of service. So if you want, if you want two ambulances running 24/7, that would fall to the districts to be, to be responsible for, to raise taxes or do whatever they need to do to, um, to, to do that. But as far as some of the details, I can provide this to you at another time. I, I mean, I, it's actually six individuals that need to be hired to have two folks in there 24/7, Mr. Fire. That's actually six people. So million dollars doesn't get as much as you think it might these days, but, um, but I think, I think that's a good number. The study we did said 1.3, 1.4 million. I think, I think we believe that we can do that for less, and it's, that was mostly because in, in the fire districts, we would have that economies of scale where we don't have to hire any EMS director, we have the fire chiefs, or, or you don't have to, um, pay for separate, two separate organizations, we can combine those into, into one, and I think there's some, some real savings there. Any answers you can give?
I think that's, as far as I can remember right now.
Yeah, Shane. I think that's, yeah, also your argument.
Any, any questions from council for Shane to start with? Okay. Do you have anything? So, so myself, Dave, and the campus mayor, Matt Foreman, have met together. We've gotten a word of the, the interlocal agreement. We've looked at a few things that we, that we don't love, a few things have been already changed, a few things that we still think may need to be changed. I know that's been an ongoing discussion even as recent as today. So we kind of talked about some of those things, and then I'll turn that over to Dave first, and then we'll talk about any of the concerns we got, and he can just start with questions after that.
As Shane said, this has been a long, long, long process, and it's important that the cities and the district, the fire district, are working hand in hand with each other. 303 is not counting to the cities, and it's a, it's a pass down to a guy in the bottom total pool right now, that's the city. So you're gonna take the brunt of everything the county wants to pass down, send you a bill for, for whatever they figured it costs on a countywide basis to provide this minimum service of 911. The, uh, we, Mayor McCormick and myself and Shane went this morning, and we critiqued quite a few of the, of the issues that you and I talked about with Matt, that we did before. Just so you're aware, we thought there were at least three different phases in there that gave Park City or whoever we contract with an open checkbook. And we took those out. We also took out a lot of the liability that was being passed down to the cities for their administrative costs, which was the right thing to do. I don't know really quite how they got in there. Doesn't matter, but we're in the process of getting them out. There's still three or four more things, at least on the fire district side, that we need to, to work out. But right now, I think they're cooperating with both sides, or all three sides, and you thought Park City or North Summit, plus the county, plus us, are, are doing a pretty job, a pretty good job of communicating. I will say this, that last night, I was accused of not communicating with my councilman. By law, I can't. That's why I've been communicating with, with, with my, with the mayors. When I communicate with my councilman outside of a public meeting, I'm breaking the law. So that's one of the reasons why I haven't been able to do that. If it had a chief, the chief would keep all three of us informed on that. I think that the process we're going is the best way we can go. I think it's head and shoulders over whatever else the study was suggesting. Let me say this. The study probably suggested the most economical way to take care of the EMS, and that was on a completely county basis. But in case you don't know, there's a little bit of difference between Park City and the, and the B side. Just, just a titch. And at least, I think we as commissioners felt like, if we're gonna have the EMS, and I, then we better control our own destiny. Now, let me say this about Park City. I'm not happy about their service, but I continue, if I was in the business, or Bob was in any position, I don't know that I would do anything differently. And here's why. 90% of his business is in Park City. 90% of his customers are in Park City, and he has to make them happy first. That's why the, the atmosphere or the condition that we're in right now, I don't know that anybody can be blamed. But the fact is that the environment, the situations here in Canlis and Cobell have grown to the point, we need to be independent. We need to be able to have a say of what we're gonna do. I, I am not faulting Park City. I'm discouraged sometimes, but I don't know that I would do anything differently if I were in their position. Just, just so you're aware of that. And, and therefore, I think there's lots of room for improvement if we control our own destiny. But the key to it is, is we have to have cross-trained people. We have to have a cross-trained fireman who can do paramedic work or EMT work and vice versa. And that's where the study messed up, is they were keeping the EMS completely separate and the fire completely separate, and we were paying administration, you know, for both sides. There is any reason why we can't cross, we can't, uh, the chief can't do both, and therefore cut half the salary out of, of expenses out of that. We still have some challenges. There, there's no need to go out. I see that with, no matter who we contract with, we are at least a year away from being able to raise our, our, our money and also our, our personnel within our district to where we can say, "Mr. Park City, thank you," but we've reached a level now where we think we can be independent and do it ourselves. Now, if we fail, the buck stops with us here on this side. It, it will stop with the commissions. You can't pass it on to Park City or anybody else, it'll stop here. But then that's, that's, should be the natural way everything should be. The head of the house is where the buck stops, and that's, that's what we're trying to put in place right here. I would suggest, and Shane may not like this, so plug your ear, Shane. But you have a contract in front of you, and you haven't read it, nor has your attorney. But I think time is of the essence, because there is, no matter who we contract with, they need a 60-day period to get, to get employee job, to, to be able to get staff so that they can provide us with that service. And right now, we're on borrowed time with whoever it is we contract with. And so I would strongly encourage you to put forth the effort you need to, to, to read this, and if you, I would suggest if you have problems with it, that you contact Mayor McCormick. Let him work it, because he kind of has a pipeline with Dave Thomas right now, and, and I'm working with Dave and also with Shane on the district side. So you really need to study. You really need to, I would say you'd be foolish as heck to sign it tonight, but you need to get on it as quick as you can, because there's things that, in there that I don't believe that Mr. Thomas, when he wrote it, was understanding the position of the cities. I think he does a much better job now, since he's had these corrections that we, that we got this morning. But you, you need to look at it. You need, you need to have a feeling for it and stake the time to study it and begin your journey and let it work out. So that's, that's my encouragement. I will tell you, right up front, when we, as a district, get ready to take that over, we're gonna have to have a tax increase. There is no any way around it. Our budget at the fire district right now is $728,000 a year. Now, you talk to anybody in the city and they think of a fire district where they can send millions of dollars. Our firemen, to their own detriment, have worked their butts off to keep those taxes down, and we haven't been able to aggressively keep things in place. You have been blessed for the last 50 to 60 to 70 years of firemen that have dedicated their lives and worked their families and worked their vacations and worked their holidays around the fire department. But as I said before, the environment has changed, or the atmosphere has changed, or the conditions within the community have changed. We now have five and six million dollar homes. Not that they're any more important than a $500,000 home. Homes are homes, and they're, they're a place for people to, to go, and children, perhaps in the world, might not be able to say that. But I'll also tell you that in California, in the last three months, two of the biggest nation insurance, property insurance people have pulled out of California because of the inflation that was taking place and the lack of firemen in certain areas. One of those same companies has pulled out of Utah on all new construction. They don't want a thing in the Utah because of how far away the, the, the fire truck is, your partner might be. So though we might be raising taxes on the one end to, to work with the EMS, hopefully on the other side, we're also either lowering the insurance on your home or at least keeping it stagnant. Now, that's a trade-off, because I know that insurance is going crazy, especially with all of the, the national disaster, natural disasters and everything that's taking place across this nation right now. We think that we get ahead of this and start doing some of these things, if they're not cut, at least they'll be minimized in, in, in standards. I got a letter from my insurance company, which is nationwide, three days ago, saying that they were lowering our insurance. Whether they've been misfigured in the first place, I don't know, or whether they thought it was really being a good guy and cutting my insurance, I don't know. The letter didn't say that. But I do know that I got the letter a couple of days ago saying, "They were cutting back on premiums." So ladies and gentlemen, there's not any real right answer. But the, the wrong answer is doing nothing, because the world is not gonna stand still while South Summit Fire District or Canlis, Francis, and Oakley decide to take a hiatus and let the world pluck goodbye. Decisions will be made. You heard Shane talking about, they're really trying to work for September 15th. Well, we might bypass September 13th, or whatever day it was, but we cannot bypass the 1st of January, because whoever we contract with has got to be up and ready to go and provide us with that service. So if we're not at the table, there are bypasses there, and that's what we're trying to do, is get us to the table and keep them, from including us as, as the main course. That's all I have.
Thanks.
I did say one thing. I don't disagree with anything that Dave said, especially about the agreement tonight. I don't know when your next meeting is. If it's, if it's early September, that would probably work for us, because it's late September, maybe when you want to ask if you could do a, a special meeting, but there are four or five items that I think we're still going to change on that agreement. They're pretty small. There's not, I think most of it is generally good, if you want to review it already, but I think Mayor Foreman and Mayor McCormick went over some of those things. A lot of it is cleaned up. So I'd rather, still rather, I'd rather hit you a, a 100% correct copy before, before you adopt anything, and I don't think we're gonna do that tonight. But I have a meeting with Dave Thomas, who you probably know who Dave Thomas is, tomorrow or, or your council, and hopefully he'll make those changes very quickly, and I can get you something maybe even tomorrow. But I appreciate just the, the expedition as, as quick as you can.
So our, our next meeting is September 14th.
Okay.
That's our regular schedule.
That's your regular schedule, okay. Let's see how things go. I think the city, the county council is hoping to meet on the 13th and have this wrapped up, but I don't know how all these moving parts are gonna go.
Can I say, yeah. Thank you for having a special meeting tonight. I didn't, I should have mentioned that when I got there, but you guys, I'm sure you're about to be here tonight, and thank you very much. You guys catch a breath of fertilizer all the time, and one more night you didn't really need, but thank you for accommodating us in the county. Appreciate that.
So, um, just, just real quick, some of the concerns I had with, with the, the contract as it was written prior to today were, were a few things where, uh, like Dave mentioned it, it felt a little bit like we would be committed to basically signing an open check, a blank check, not knowing what the costs may be, not knowing where they may come from, not knowing how we can, um, control those costs, or how we can budget for those costs, or those types of things. That's been addressed in the new copy. And then, I don't know, there, there was some concern about, I know that there's a commitment to provide the two ambulances. One of those was a suburban.
I saw that there. I've got, I don't know, we were talking about this this morning, I'm not sure if it was our legal folks that said, who made, I don't know who made the decisions or who gets it locked, so I need to look into that, but that's part of, a lot of this too, for, for getting to.
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, it, it may not be functional as an ambulance.
Well, I think it says in the, in the, in the words, well, you're getting two ambulances, and it says, "These are the trams, as well as the Chevy."
Right.
So, and, 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 doesn't it? I, I don't see that.
That's actually, that, that might actually be in...
It's page five, according to my notes.
Yeah.
Has a list of...
Well, it doesn't say. It just lists, it just lists a unit number.
Yeah, slide 31.
But one of those is actually a suburban, because it's a study, um, yeah, the 500.
So I gotta verify whether that's gonna be wrong.
As part of the, as part of the...
I'm assuming that wasn't the intent, but I'm not sure.
Right. No, I, it probably isn't, but, but again, one of those things that are concerned. I'm sure this one's been talked about as well, um, the million dollars for basic 911, but then, uh, that possibly increasing based on the three-year average, but there was some concern that maybe that should be, based on the three-year average, but increasing annually. And I know you've seen all of these, Shane, but this is more for their, the council's benefit. I'm just trying to look at some of these notes. On page six, item number three, there were some concerns about some of the wording and how that, how that might work. there were some concerns about some of the wording and how that, how that might work. And how some of that money would be distributed if, if, who was providing the enhanced number one changed. Then page 10, there's again the same issue of kind of a blank check possibly. So anyway, there's a, there's a few concerns that I have with some of that. But I will say that between the districts and the county and the cities, I, I think there's been a good working relationship there. Everyone's working to, to get things ironed out, to figure out what's best. I wouldn't be prepared to adopt this agreement, like, you know, we've talked about already today. But I think we're getting much closer by, you know, addressing some of these issues. The, the thing that, that I would say for our council is, we have to, we have to at least be ready to, to move on at some point, because by January 1st, we're then held accountable for providing these services by the state. If we don't have something in place, then we're not providing that. We're on, in trouble, so. They didn't say, do this, and here's some money. They just said, do this. So, we're going to be held accountable for it, one way or the other. The best thing we can do is work together with these two groups and make it the best we can. What my concern is, or what my goal is in, in working through this process is, I don't care about the politics. I don't care about who's in charge. I don't care about what's, you know, who has the most power, any of those things. What I care about is that the citizens have the level of service that they expect. And that we have at least a voice and a seat at that table, so that we can at least have some say in how things go. I don't, the rest of it is irrelevant, in my opinion. But the level of service that the citizens expect is not. And so this is the way that we can reach the level that they should be receiving. So, with that, I'll, whatever, any other discussion or questions or concerns anyone else has?
All right, here I go with something weird question again. So the fleet of ambulances, the South Summit fleet or whatever gets ordered in here, is that the ambulances that we currently have stationed around? And two of them will just be permanently here, or is that an extra two from what we have here?
I think it's both. I think you'll immediately get the two, and then we will replace, I think, one of those in year two, is my understanding. So, we would cycle those out. I do think that after that, the responsibility would be on the Fire District to replace those. We want to start you off off and right with the new requirement, but then eventually that would be a district cost.
And that's got to come out of that moving out.
No, that is separate. That initial cost for the new, the ambulances purchased in the first three years, and the ambulances that are given to the district are outside of $1 million.
Right, but you're saying that at some point in time, then the first ones are repurchased?
Yes.
It's then going to fall onto the Fire District to come up with the money to replace the ambulances? And what is that general cost of the ambulance?
That's what an ambulance costs. $350,000. About three houses, $350,000.
$350,000, almost half of your allotted budget that you're going to have to come up with to maintain the fire and EMS service. It's not sustainable. Well, it's going to have to be sustainable at some point.
Right.
I know there's no set answer, but how long does an ambulance usually... I mean, Mom Valtra, give me a year, not even a new one, but you're probably more careful with your ambulances.
I think three to five years.
I think so.
How long should it be a minimum?
Right, depends on your, depends on your overall usage, right?
I would call, I mean, obviously you have to know where.
How soon she has to come full out?
The reality is that, that, that there is some truth to that unsustainable statement. However, that... Some, some, somewhere, all of this has to be paid for. Whether it's coming from Park City, whether it's coming from South County, whether it's coming from South Summit Fire District. It, it comes from tax money and it's going to get paid for one way or the other.
But also there's a factor we're not tapping in on that. And that is the fees and the collections.
Right.
And the fact is, and that's one of the reasons why, if we can get to a higher standard without a whole lot of overhead costs, in other words, you go from an EMS, Julie helped me here, to an advanced EMS, we're able to charge more when we're transporting. When you go to a paramedic, what part, like Park City is offering the paramedic rescue service, that's probably double or triple what the normal EMS is. So when you start doing that, then that helps add to the overhead of your, of your ambulances. Now, taken in subterfuge, I think the collection on campus or on South Summit right now is only the 30 to 35% of the collection. Now, why is it that low? I don't want to judge. But I believe that if you concentrate on the higher, on your collections, you'll have a higher percentage and collect more money. I don't believe that there's really any real dire need for Park City to do some of these things, but you also have to understand that if a good share of our constituency over here are over 65 and on Medicare, it's, it's going to be stagnant. So you're not, you're making more money off of that. I think between the paramedic service and the, and the average EMS service. I'm looking at Julie over here, because she's, she's the brains behind it.
It's a sad amount that, that they pay them.
That they pay for that age Medicare goes. Okay.
But there's lots, there's lots of calls. My understanding today, there are many calls. The Park City comes over here and we're not able to get a partner. So, we should have a higher, we should go right now to around $250,000 that we're collecting. That very easily should be jumping up to a half a million or more, especially with the growth in the community that was taking place.
Okay. And I must say...
Well, but we got, that's not exactly correct, because we're not collecting it. The county is collecting that money, because right now, the county collects that money. We're not, as a Fire District, we're not.
Right, that's a good point.
Until it's taken over.
Until it's taken over, we would then be collecting that money.
Whoever's running EMS.
Whoever is running the EMS service is who's collecting it.
So, with that being said, if we're going to have to fund... I don't think one ambulance is a basic standard of service. We need to have at least two. So if you get one on a call, you get another call in. Nobody, maybe you're going to call somebody in from Park City or from North Summit.
Those agreements would have to be replaced anyway.
Right, but what I'm saying is, we're going to have, the district is going to have to fund that second ambulance. So, we get a lot of calls up in the U.S. of people who aren't citizens of the county or of South Summit District. So the only way we're going to be able to offset that cost is by trying to collect from insurance companies and that type of thing. So there's, there's no other kind of stipend or anything like that that comes from the county or anything like that, because like with Francis City, we don't have much commercial, we don't have any logging, so it's I doubt we're getting much money from tourism from Francis. I'm just trying to understand where we need to make that up at.
It's always been my concern that the district and cities better be like this. And that's one of the things in that little agreement we talked about. The liability of administration is not going to flow down to you guys. That's, but you're right, and all the statements you made. Now, there's, we haven't gotten into it, but right now, the contract reads, we'll be, we'll be responsible for the Fire District geographic area. Well, right now, the Fire District is traveling outside of that. When you start going farther up Weaver Canyon or over Wolf Creek Pass, that's got to be determined as to how that's going to be taken care of. And I do know that North Summit will end up with a contract along the North Slope. I haven't looked at their contract to see how they're going to be universal at the county, but I'm sure they're going to be aware of that. Because that's a lot of miles to pick up one person. When you get halfway there, they call us, oh, never mind, it's going to cost me money. Turn around, go back. So, nothing's perfect. It's a matter of how are we going to work this through with communicating with the county and North Summit and Park City and making this work together for the good, because the last night check, we were all constituency of Summit County. I mean, I, I think that's what, what we're under. And so, and I think Mayor McCormick this morning summarized it very well. Is the fact that it's his home condition tonight. He said, the only reason why I think the cities and the county right now are getting along as well as they are is because we're now sitting down and talking. We're now expressing our ideas through COG and through other opportunities of, of working out our differences of opinion and how things ought to be worked out. The county's going to put forth an additional, probably $3 million out of their general fund to keep North Summit, Park City and South Summit up and running. Now, I think it may not be enough. We may not think that's enough. But I can tell you, that's a pretty big gift to, to reaching your coffers and pull it out, you know, an additional $3 million. I think that once we can get, get things established and we get a chief in place, I think it would be surprising how we can think out of the box and we can cut costs and still give a heck of a good service to our constituents. Don't ask me how I'm now. I just kind of have that leap of faith. It's like starting into a new business. Most people, when they start a new business, they're kind of on a rainbow, not really knowing how the economics are going to, going to fall in there. But they're willing to go forth because they're entrepreneurs and they want to succeed. That's the way I look at this Fire District right now. We can make this sucker work. We can. I don't have all the answers right now. I, I wish I had. I was smarter to give you all the answers right now, or badly you would be asked for a good. But that's, that's where we're at. I do know, the biggest mistake that we can do is do nothing. That's not a good one.
Yeah. Anything else?
Maybe this question is better suited for like 20-year commission meetings, but I'm curious. In respect to this agreement, you're talking about cross-training between the Fire Department and EMS, those types of things, being a volunteer department. The plan to train the volunteers and hope that that stays that way, at least for the foreseeable future? Because I know, two of you are up for reelection, so who knows who's making those decisions in a few months, but...
What's your question?
I'm just wondering, like, is the plan to start hiring more people full-time, so now it's going to cost you more, we have to raise taxes higher, higher, higher? Because now we're in full-time? Are you guys still staying with volunteer?
The volunteer basis is going to have to be there for several years to make this work. I mean, if we can't hire enough people to take care of a structured fire without volunteers, that would cost us way too much. So the volunteer structure is going to be here for 10, 20 years, if, if we can get volunteers. That's always the challenge. I, I think in the beginning, it would be, we would have to hire six EMTs or cross-six firefighter EMTs. There, there are a lot of different things that can happen. We can have an EMS division and then firefighters over here. We can merge them together up front. I mean, that's going to be for the new chief to decide how he wants to do that. The volunteer, volunteers are not going away unless we can't get them to come and volunteer.
Right.
We, we have to have that basis.
So there's no exact, like, if they're going to have so many EMTs to run the one, and then we're going to count on volunteers with cross-training to... If there's a second ambulance, see, now they're running in to run the second ambulance.
That's possible.
Not step all the time?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's possible.
So, but we're not thinking like, okay, so if you're saying it takes six EMTs to run one ambulance 24/7, you would need 12 to run two?
If we wanted to staff two.
Right. Which I think we need at least two.
Well, we, we need two ambulances. We need a backup one.
Right.
As you know, when one goes out, we need the ability to call people in to cover that ambulance. I'm not sure right now if that needs to be paid full-time people yet. If we can find a volunteer, a paid volunteer basis to do that, then we can run with that and would save us some money. But we all know we need two ambulances in this area.
And we're raising taxes regardless, because we're going to have to, to run this. So we may have to now stray away?
Well, and that we don't know yet.
See, and, and that's where I have reservations, is because on one hand, you've got the county that says, have a study done. The study says 1.4 is what it's going to take. The county has now come from wherever and whoever there have given these numbers, that, oh, we can do it cheaper than what the study says. We're going to do it for a million. But yet, we're turning around and we've got people that are dead on the other side saying, well, we're going to have to raise taxes because we can't afford to do it, so we've got to raise taxes. But yet, the county's saying they're able to provide that service for a million, but you can't. Like, do the math and take the six people, 365 days, 24/7, you're at 1.1, almost 1.2 million dollars. And that's just in wages. That's not covered with training. That's not, you know, it's, it's not sustainable. It's not adequate.
So, is it the position of the county that you make that up? That's where the collections and stuff come in?
So, so the, I think that if you ask Chief Zanetti or Chief Nelson, or maybe, I don't know, anybody else that you want to contract with, because one of those two, they both made assurances, some of them in writing, that they can do it for, they can provide an ambulance 24/7, 365, for a million dollars plus collections. Before Mayor Foreman mentioned that there was a, there was what we were calling a delta in there, like, that was our, that was the legal council saying, if there isn't, if there is a difference between what the Park City Fire or North Summit Fire can do it for, the cities are responsible for that. So we've got assurances from both chiefs, and they can do it for that, more or less. I think there's still a negotiation that can happen between South Summit and those, those districts. And they would do it for that much. Now, I, I can't refute the numbers of 2,080 hours times six people times current salaries. I don't have any of that information. I'm just going over what those two chiefs said and that they are permitted to do that for, for that much.
So we, so we figured, for, for us to hire good EMTs up here in the valley, you're, you're going to have to pay them 20 to 25 bucks an hour. And I, I think where they're getting that lower rate is they're paying $15 now. We're, we're going to have some, some hard act getting people to come and work here, and so you're going to have to pay them to come and work here. But we're, we're going to grow them here. And, and they're saying that's one ambulance for this area. And I haven't sat down and talked to Chief Nelson or Chief Zanetti to see what their plan is on the backup ambulance for us. I'm assuming it's what we're giving now, it's going to come out of Park City or North Summit.
So, so you're kind of talking more mutual aid between the areas?
Yeah, for the second, for the, for the second.
I know that those are, those, those mutual aid agreements that have also been contemplated would be, would be signed. But exactly where Chief, Chief Nelson, I think, mentioned, Longship, but I, I don't know.
And, and I've brought those same concerns up in COG meetings and in several meetings we've had about this very issue. Those, those agreements, MOUs with it, within or between the different districts are going to have to be in place, whether South Summit's happening or not.
Right.
Those are, those are important, you know. In Salt Lake Valley, you know, that mutual aid happens all the time.
Every day.
Even in Salt Lake Valley, so.
And that's separate from that?
Yes, because those are between the districts.
And, and we, like, if North Summit's out, we'll go backfill them or whatever they need. If we need to go help Park City, we'll do the same. Wausatch, we do the same for them, and we expect them to come here. The challenging part is, for this area that's down in the valley, we don't deal with, is the 15, 20, 30-minute response time.
Right, but then also, there's also some outside-the-box thinking that can occur within the district that the city may not have any control over, but they can, they can staff these teams with, you know, for instance, hire a full-time chief and a couple of full-time captains, and then you have a fair pile of part-time EMTs to staff your ambulance. And then you're not paying retirements and insurance benefits and all of those things. They're, they're paying, they're even paying a good wage.
But North Summit's doing that.
Right, but they're, but they're, they're a part-time employee. You just have, if you need six people all the time, you've got 15 part-timers.
Probably full-time somewhere else.
Right, yeah, right.
And, and if they are full-time for somewhere else, we wouldn't be responsible for their training, certifications. They get that from their, from their main.
Right, so there are some cost savings that, that aren't being thought about in, in some of those ways.
You'd be able to two on, four off.
There's multiple, multiple things that can happen here. And, and our, our bills, we've got to get the chief hired that, that can put this into place.
Right.
And give him, us his vision for the next year, five-year, 10-year plan now, bro. and give us his vision for the next year, five-year, 10-year plan now, bro.
But I guess still my question is, is if the study says it takes 1.4, irregardless of what Park City, because we're not Park City, they had an opportunity for years to put into place equipment, the ability, the, you know, training, the administration to be able to do that, right? So we don't have that. And at the end of the day, we're going to be liable to start up this EMS service or we're just contracting it with Park City for life. So why not just give it to Park City, right? So if we're ever looking in the future that we're gonna take it, we've gotta have an amount that we know is sustainable to move forward with it. And so my question is, is if it's 1.4, why would we go away from anything different than 1.4? And yes, that's the only way, if we do take it, to be able to survive. Yeah, we're gonna have to find ways to contain and cut costs and make it affordable. But cutting $400,000 out from us right off the bat because Park City or North Summit that already had money and had the time to get up and get started, they've got that, we don't. And we're cutting ourselves $400,000 before we put our feet on the ground.
So the study didn't contemplate fire EMS to you? So the main concern with the 1.4 is that you're starting a whole new department with all new administration? And I'm not able to refute, I'm just going off of what fire employees and personnel told me, that they can do it for 1.2 more or less.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. I'm sure they can do that because they already have the management inside. They were already paying the full-time chief. They were already paying for having a EMS coordinator or, you know, they've already had that in place. They've had money that was coming in to do that. We're starting out running on the ground with nothing. We are putting together a EMS fire service with $400,000 less and we've got to still do the administration side of it. We don't have that, we don't have that in place.
So are they saying they can go into an agreement with South Summit for that price? Or that they can run it independent for that price?
Go into an agreement with South Summit for that.
So like what Ted's saying, is they already have some of that infrastructure administration set up, so it's probably possible for them to provide to us that if they just take it under their umbrella. But for us, it might cost more.
Yeah, but that's where the heartburn is, is we're starting our feet on the ground, $400,000 in the hole.
So that would be accurate at all. It's not 1.4 million, that's not the difference in local county value. I think, you know, where North Summit is today, I think you were, where you are today, North Summit was there a year ago, maybe two, but in a very, very similar situation. And I think they're very much capable of doing, operating this. You know, I think Chief Nielsen would argue he'd been operating it already. He's been a first responder there before an ambulance from Park City got there. He was already there with his AEMTs. So I think the 1.4 is a number that a consultant gave us and I think it's independent of a fire department, so there is no economies of scale of that. It's you starting a new EMS department and this is gonna, this is what an ambulance is gonna cost you. But again, I can't say, oh, here's, all the numbers broken out, I'm not ready to talk about that. But I think some people can. And even if you, you know, Francis City Council wants to know what those numbers are, Chief Zanetti or Chief Nielsen can break that out for you. Contributions to URS and all your medicines that go on your ambulance and all that stuff can be broken out.
Right. Well, don't take this the wrong way, but also, I mean, basically if Francis City says, "Yeah, we'll enter into this interlocal agreement, the idea is that South Summit Fire District's gonna take this over." We're gonna say, "We better enter into this agreement that you guys figured out."
That's fine.
That's reality, right? And I think that that's, I think that's the best way forward because, again, we have some control. We have, we at least have a seat at the table, we have a voice. We can say, "Hey, this is not working, what are you gonna do in order to make this work?" And then, and then we can rely on the district to provide that service. And right now, we don't have much of a voice gift at all and our service is not great. And well, this gives us an opportunity to have a voice and increase that service. And yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna see some tax increase, that's gonna happen. But that's gonna happen regardless because if we don't give it to South Summit and we say, "Okay, we're gonna contract with Park City," they're not gonna continue providing the services they're providing today or the money that they're getting today. So basically, it comes down to they're gonna come to Francis City with their handout because we're responsible to provide the service anyway. And if we don't have a budget and the service isn't provided by the city, we gotta have somebody to provide it. And they're just gonna say, "If you want to provide it, here's what it costs." Could be, who knows how much.
Well, if you know how Unified Fire Works down in Salt Lake, it's gonna cost you a lot.
A lot.
Park City will do the same.
And right now, we don't have a budget, I can tell you that. If they come with a handout for a million dollars, we're gonna say, you know, "Tax in because we don't have a million dollars to hand."
You guys vote for two in taxation this year?
No, but, yeah, a year or two ago.
Two years.
So, I mean, it's just, that's reality, we don't have a million dollars to hand.
Right, but I don't wanna enter into an agreement that's just gonna dump it on South Summit Fire Department and say, "Hey, you're responsible."
No, I agree, but that's why these conversations...
Hey, we don't have the money either.
Yeah, right.
But you have really good tax.
No, we don't. We can only go to 0.8.
Right, but I still...
Which is different than what Park City can go to, different than what North Summit can go to. We're limited. Well, sort of, but so are we. Right, but that's what I'm saying, even as a fire district, we're limited to what we can do. So if we can't do that and we can't provide that service, we're no better off than what we are now with having to go through Park City. We took it. We took it for a million dollars. And if we can't sustain that, whether that's a year down the road, two years down the road, three years down the road, we're gonna have to start buying ambulances at $500,000 a pop every five years, which is 50% of what that budget is.
Well, yeah, but you're missing that, that's not your entire budget. If South Summit Fire District is relying only upon the million dollars that the county's giving them, then you're missing the boat because you gotta, you gotta have some budget. Above and beyond that, like, collections, tax increase, like, your entire budget is not going to be $1 million.
Right, but our budget is handling the fire and you're still gonna have fire costs that comes in there.
Right, but right now, your budget's gonna be 700,000, it's gonna be 1.7.
Nah, it's not gonna take it to that high.
Sure is, because you're gonna give you a million dollars.
You're gonna give us a million dollars.
But that's only the million, we're already using our 700,000. Right, so you have a million, you have 1.7 in your total budget. Plus now you'd be getting collections, tax increases. So you're operating on to this, that your budget is only a million dollars and that's not accurate either.
I mean, you can say, "Pretty important things, Mayor." And the fact is, number one, the buck's gonna stop with the fire commissioners. That's where the buck's gonna stop. Second of all, under the umbrella of the fire district, everybody in the South Summit Fire District will be taxed equally.
Right.
And if it drops down to you, then you're gonna have to put in place a special tax only for your people. And that's, and that's not gonna be fair to your people because they're not gonna receive the much bigger service than they are right now, if any at all. So the real, the real way of doing it is letting the buck stop with the fire district and protect you like we're doing right now so that the cost can't drop down to you. But Ted, this right, our limit right now is triple zero eight. But I'll also tell you, there's only one and maybe two fire protection districts in the state of Utah left. That's all we're on. I'm not afraid to know the legislature and explain to them what 303 has done to us and ask them to raise the cap on it. Or else I say to them, "Okay, what the hell do you wanna do? You guys come take over the EMS because you've taxed us, you've capped us to work, we can't do it." And I truly believe, I mean, I have a little experience in the legislature, I truly believe that there will not be an negative vote in either body because they'll understand what we're trying to do and there's only one of us or two of us at the most in the state of Utah that'll affect. I just have the faith that we can work this through. But the tax will be evenly dispersed across the entire district, not allowing it to drop down even for you into a tax increase just for your citizens in Francis. That's not fair and that's why we're trying to do what we're gonna do and bring a wedge between you and any liability.
Right.
Do you have something else?
No. Yeah, I just have a question just so I have it in my head. Right now, we're off around a 728,000 budget, okay? The county is gonna give us a million dollars. So that is in addition to the 728.
Correct.
We've been running on 728, the million, and they're giving us two ambulances.
Yeah, but we haven't been running EMS, right? We're not paying any EMS currently.
Without the 728.
Just taking alone, like I said, do the math. Take them six people, that's gonna take to run that 24/7, 365, times that by 25 bucks an hour, and you're gonna come up with over $800,000, just in wages.
I was not aware that we were not paying that right now. So that million is gonna, a lot of that's gonna get eaten up. Three quarters of that will be...
Maybe 6% of it is gone, just in wages. And that's not anything more as you need to do any kind of training. And again, you know, it's been said that, yeah, once we take it, we're gonna have to find ways, and there is ways, which is a reason that Park City is saying they can do it. But it's also been said that if we were just to turn it over to Park City and it went to Park City, Park City's gonna turn around and raise taxes, so you're gonna pay taxes. And that's because they know that you can't do it for a million bucks. You can't provide that service, six people, doing the math, what that costs and then throughout the years replacing ambulances at 400, 500,000 dollars every five years. The maintenance on them, et cetera, the drugs, I mean, there's a lot to it. You start adding up all them dollars and the million doesn't come in. And so you're forced with tax increase and tax increase. And I respect David knowing that he's got them ideas of being able to do that, but without them actually, I guarantee, it's hard for me to swallow that because it's an unknown. It's, you're going into something that's pretty scary and it's with people's lives and the service that you've gotta provide.
So what would make you feel better is that the county put in more money per year? That's basically what you're...
Especially for the first five years as an operating cost to get it up and going. We've gotta have something, some kind of insurance, which is the same thing that the county did with North Summit to get North Summit up and going, was they provided them with X amount of dollars to get them up and going.
So did you say earlier that they agreed to do the million budget plus another million on top of that? Like, one time?
Yeah, did you explain, you said there was another 3 million that they've now...
Or was that, or is that the one?
That's the 1 million, so it's 1 million per ambulance and there's three ambulances.
So it was a 1 million per, and then for the first year, you get an extra 1 million per start, okay?
So let's not forget that Summit County's money is also your money. If Summit County says, "Hey, we'll give you 5 million dollars," guess where it's coming from?
Yeah.
Your ass pocket. And your ass pocket, but it doesn't matter where. Whether it comes from the fire district or it comes from Francis City or it comes from Summit County, we're paying it.
Yeah, but we've talked about this before and I think it's a sentiment on the east side that a lot of us don't feel like, Park City feels like we're Summit County, but they are Summit County. And we're just kind of the Oklahonian friends.
Maybe so, but the money, the money is not coming from Park City, it's coming from...
Oh, I understand, but Park City's part of Summit County, never mind.
It's coming out of your property tax and whatnot, but it's money that you've been putting in anyhow. There's a dollar amount, and people have asked that question numerous times. What is that all? Out of the budget that you've got, the money that you guys are seeing, what is that? On my house, what do I pay that goes towards emergency services?
I don't answer that.
That's all your part. It comes out of, the money that goes in for 911 service is on your cell phone bills and on your landlord bills. And it goes to Ucan and then it gets divided up.
For dispatch.
Well, it's a dispatch, but there's also, there's also a portion that goes to ambulance.
We can talk about municipal services fund if you want, which is something you don't pay and that pays for 75% of the sheriff's department. So if I'm a first responder, you're not paying for any of that. Sheriff's, you know, and that's also a topic that's come up here in the past and hopefully may have stayed in the past.
You know, the only thing I'm gonna say is that at the end of the day, for South Summit Fire to take that on, there's going to be that cost and we've gotta make sure that it can be done. Otherwise, we're not providing any better or can't really provide any better service than what's already there. It doesn't matter whether it's coming from our taxes, county, whatever it is, but our taxes is limited of what we can come up with. So we have to make sure that with whatever that maximum amount that we can come up with isn't gonna cover it, that we've gotta make sure that what the county's willing to provide...
So with your math, with your, I agree with you. The funds are limited, there's no question. But with your math, six people at $25 an hour is $300,000. So you still have another $700,000 excess.
You did that 24 hours a day.
Well, yeah, because you don't, you don't make $25 an hour 24 hours a day. You're giving them...
You're paying somebody to be on shift for 24 hours.
But if you're a full-time fireman and you work 24 hours a year, you don't get paid $25 per hour for 24 hours. You have a salary that's, that is whatever that number is, but it doesn't always compute back to $25 an hour.
Yeah, the wage varies.
How many hours a year is it for two or four hours? It's 2,080 for a full-time, 24-hour employee, but it's different.
I may be wrong because that's my calculations, I use 2,080. You're right, I don't know how a fireman is paid. He's on call 24.
It's not, they don't make $25 an hour for 24 hours a day, I can tell you that.
They get, they get paid their salary.
Right, right.
And that's divided among all the hours that they work. And for Unified, for Sandy, we're different. We get paid on a 19 and a half hour day. We don't get paid on a 24 hour day, we get paid 19 and a half. So my wage is higher than you have. They get paid a 24-hour wage, so I might make 25 in Sandy, but because they're dividing out 24 hours, their wage might be 15 or 18 dollars.
You're probably worse than you're...
But when you do the whole calculation and you take, you got one shift and then you got the next shift and the next shift, you're covering for 24 hours. So one person though is not making that, but every shift that you have, when you count up all the shifts for one ambulance, six people, 24 hours a day, you're paying for 24 hours a day.
But you shouldn't be.
Explain to me how you're not.
Because if you're a full-time fireman, you don't get paid $25 an hour 24 hours a day. Your wage is different. So you're paid a salary and so if you're gonna have a part-time guy there, now you're cutting out benefits, you're cutting out retirement, you're cutting out a lot of those costs that would be factored into your wage, right? So even if you, if you break that down into 12-hour shifts, that one guy is still only gonna work a certain number of hours a year.
One person's gonna make 50 grand a year, something like that, 25 hours an hour.
Right, and so is the next guy.
And so is the next guy, which is...
So that's 300,000 dollars.
So when you're, when you're on shift, you're getting, your salary is based off of your 12-hour shift that you work.
Right.
So you're getting paid for every one of the 12 hours, you're not giving up any hours, right? So the next person that's taking 12 hours is getting paid for 12 hours. At the end of the day, you're paid on both shifts, 24 hours.
I think that math doesn't include weekends. So 2,080 is not, that's 40 hours a week.
That's 40 hours. When you count every single day, when you have somebody on shifts, every day, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, you're paying that money all the way through.
So even if that's the case, then it's 600,000. But that's not a million, that's not 800, that's 600.
But that's just your wage. That's not covering anything else, that's not covering administration costs.
You still have, you still have an excess. And I'm not saying it's perfect, but I'm just saying it does, there is no perfect answer to this. And really, it's not, like, we don't need to sit here and argue about wages and all of this stuff. The reality is, someone has to take over EMS services.
Exactly.
And someone has to pay for it. And if, if we, if we don't enter into an agreement with the county and with South Summit Fire District to pay for it, someone else is going to take it, someone else is going to, and you're, we're still going to pay for it. And some of that might actually then be passed on to Francis City rather than spread across the district itself. And then, we as a city have no way to come up with that money, except for adding a special tax. And then, you then have zero say in what happens or how the services will go.
More importantly, our citizens are going to. They're going to be the ones that are going to take the hit. Because they're going to get the same ambulance service we're getting. So if our citizens are okay with the ambulance service we're getting, then what the heck? But I don't hear that. I hear a lot of.
Well, I can tell you that from a professional and a citizen standpoint, we're not happy about it.
I don't think anybody is.
If someone in my family were to need an ambulance right now, they're as, they're not getting one. We'd go in the car and get them. And that, that is what I don't want to have in the future. And I think the only way that we have any control or any, at least voice, sheet at the table is in this way. Now, there's details to work out, there's funding to work out, I won't argue that. But I think at least we have something to work to work.
We think we're on the right track.
I agree. But I'm just, you know.
I just want to make sure.
I want to make sure that we're doing our homework and that we're making sure that the money is there to sustain. If we're going to take it, we've got to be able to make sure it's sustainable or you're not giving the community anything better than the dollar, and it falls back on us somehow.
Well, by my understanding, legally, state tells us we have to provide the service.
As of January 20.
As of January 1st, 2024. Okay. Right now, we're relying on Park City. Pretty much, Park City is an open checkbook. They can come to us and say, this is your bill, pay it. We're looking to become self-sustaining, pretty much, to not be under that umbrella of uncertainty of cost.
Or they could come to us and say, yeah, we're not providing your service.
Right. Okay, understood. So now, they're graciously going to give us a million dollars a year to get a start. Obviously, we're in discussions, maybe that's not enough.
With an increase.
With a cost living increase. And they're also going to take, be kind of the buffer between the state and the city of Francis.
Because then our statutory obligation is meant.
Right, because we're in an agreement.
Between the county and the city.
Yes.
We would be the secret. And that ILA is doing that too, legally saying, we acknowledge that we have a responsibility here, and you're going to do this for us. So it's almost like you can sort of.
I understand that. And I understand that. I've been in business for 35 years, so I know that in the back of your head, the money is always there. But I think we're going to be in a better position to better control our destiny than leaving it in the hands of Park City or some other agency that either could just jack up the prices or like Jeremy said, just come to us and say, we're done. Yeah, there are some hurdles we better talk about, think about, how we can make some extra money to be able to afford the ambulances. Again, that could be kind of a, I think a three to five-year span is a good one to look for. But there's not necessarily, we're going to tear those things up in three to five years. We could get six or seven things out and be a little bit hip. We could stash some of the extra money that we're not using for the extra wages. Again, I'm not sure after your fire department. I calculated 2080, because that's what I do with my employees. But you guys are on seven days a week. You have seven days a week. I'm sure there's overtime on that. I don't know, maybe if your schedule's overlap to where.
Typically, they try to schedule to keep the overtime available.
Okay, now, if you're a 12-hour shift, in my industry, 12-hour shift, I have to pay overtime, time and a half over eight over it. But you guys don't have to.
Emergency services.
Okay, okay. So again, there's things I need to learn to know what the exact numbers are. And that was a question I was going to ask. We don't pay for the EMS now. Have we actually run an estimate, a spreadsheet of what the cost could be? And again, I know we can get volunteers, that's going to be different. You have a full-time guy, you've got the biddies. So we really don't know concrete how much that made.
We don't have that here, but I know that that's been done. And I've got a manual here to have she's ready, and she built some book spreadsheet or whatever to show what those costs are. They broke these down.
That would be, I think that would kind of be helpful just to squelch some, maybe some of the fears.
Yeah. Then we can talk really, you know, this is the right, this is right, and keep down some to rest.
Well, and yeah, keep in mind that tonight, we're talking about this basic agreement. But honestly, this agreement that's in front of me does not form what we're agreeing to yet. Because there's still some tweaks, and maybe some of these discussions can be had. But I think for tonight's purposes, what we're looking for is.
Well, I think.
Is this direction we're going in?
The concept that they put forth, I think is what we need to discuss and all agree upon. It's the right way to go, instead of not, like, just like Dave said, if we don't do anything in action, it's the wrong thing to pursue.
Well, I'd certainly rather have South Summit Fire District charging EMS for South Summit.
I would too.
100%.
I would too. I will say, the devil's in the details, and that's what we're going to fish out. And as well as we know how at the present status, do any of us know if the future's going to be, maybe the contract won't cover, some damn thing will happen down the road. But at least we're working that way. And I truly believe that there's probably been better cooperation, even among the fire districts, because we've been forced to the table on this darn thing here. I will say that I've probably been the lucky one that I've been able to go do that. Because that's the way it's been. But I have faith that we're going to get some things done, and we're going to have cooperation.
I'm just way too old, or else I'd volunteer.
Oh, we get there's always a stop.
Oh, okay, well, we may need to talk, but I'm way too tired.
You don't need to drive.
So just real quick, for just Geez, Unified's hours are figured at 2880?
Right here.
Or somewhere real close to that? And that works, for six, for six, for six people, that works out 430.
Well, that, like I said, that's, I agree, that's basically just, you know, if they're full-time, you've got the biddies and other things. They need.
Well, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be your total, but.
And any smart businessman is going to make sure that he's got a little buffer in there.
That's true.
You certainly have to fund depreciation. You've got one year of product taking on that deal.
So when you times that number by 0.3, and 20% every year, you've got to go away.
Right, but again, I think there's budgetary things that we're not covering.
There are probably a dozen and a half EMTs or paramedics in this valley that presently we are not working with. Why? I don't know whether we haven't looked at them, we haven't, they haven't volunteered. But if you, if some guy comes in and says, hey, I own a full 12-hour shift, twice a week, and he's not paying benefits, we're not doing him anything, and maybe we're not even paying $25, maybe we're paying $20, because you'll be sitting a lot, or you'll be sitting quite often, waiting for a call to commit. We don't ever see. Oh. Say what?
You stay. You don't have to sit around.
Oh, it's the end?
That's right.
Okay. She jumped down my throat last night.
I did. I got mad at him because he won't come down.
She threw a, she threw a pen at me last night. It was a deadly weapon, and I was almost calling the 911.
She missed, she, it's not sticking out.
But still, but still, there are people that we can pull from the community and not have to pay their benefits.
Right.
And obviously, there's multiple ways, like you just said, it does have. The thing, the fear is, you know, the fear is, do we make this jump? You know, like I said, it may not cancel out. As a smart businessman, you know, Bill Gates may not go with it, because the percentage is all right. But we're in a different, we're kind of in a position where we have to make a decision. And it's whether we be self-sufficient or we rely on somebody else. That's right. That's the way I see it. Royals never land. That's the way I see it. May be wrong. Turn around, I work with that.
Clint, anything?
I just want to, you know, I've got a lot to look into, because the people that are actually going to pull this off, the talented people, we might be cross-trading, and we can make sure that it makes sense to them, so.
Mayor, I need to leave.
Nope, you're good, thank you. I think we're about to wrap this up.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Because if you're, if I, if I get you this up by leaving, then you'll be making me too.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks.
You know that I want.
Mayor, I'm.
Are you leaving?
Thanks. I'm going to get the due version of this agreement. It's not going to be very good, but it's going to address the mayor's, fire department's concerns. So I'll send that to you probably hopefully tomorrow. I got the other day to talk to you. And you could just let that out, and we'll talk about it maybe the next time you meet. Maybe just turn the call to me.
Sure, and then, yeah, I was going to say, we can plan on that unless something changes.
Yeah, just tend to look at it.
I hope not.
Thanks for having me today. Any questions you have?
All right. That's it.
Thanks, Ted.
The only other thing I would say is, to those that are able to negotiate, and as you're going into this, really round some numbers and input some, because if we're going to do it, we've got to make sure we can do it, or we're just, we're not providing anything.
And I think, like you said, that study's been done.
And everybody that has done and put in the time, it's come a long ways, and it's coming. I just got to really make sure that it's sustained.
Now, your study, you're going to provide, that's full-time cost, full-time quarters. That would be our worst-case scenario for cost.
For now. If we had. The point that you're making, though, about the ambulance is a good one. And this is intended to be a, let's get this going, let's get this started and be self-sustaining. You're right, after five, 10 years, it's going to have to be.
Well, and since 2013, the county has provided the ambulances for Summit County ambulance all along. And then subsidized Park City for us, for North Summit. I mean, you're talking, how many years is that, that they had their ambulances paid for? We should make sure that we're.
We only paid $937,000 the last year for one incident or seven incidents to Park City. And they were, and we didn't give them any for their own, whether that's fair or not. They've somehow made it, but, yeah.
No, I really, I really like the concept of all this. And I'm just going to, I'm going to use somebody else's brain besides my own. So when you get all this stuff to us, so my daughter is an EMT firefighter in Washington County, in St. George. And she's also a CPA, and she does the financing. So I'm going to let her look it over, and it'll make me sound smart, but.
Yeah.
And she'll name the number, the number's sad.
She work for State of the City?
All right, okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, I'll take the motion. Unless somebody wants to talk about this more.
A motion. What? Too, oh, too urgent. This isn't going to take very long, but Sam, you understand the way EMS is running currently? The fire department, there's no cost whatsoever for that. All the fire department is doing is assisting the ambulance. We show up, we go there, and if they need help lifting someone, that's why we're there. As far as I know, we're not getting paid very much to do that. But when I go on.
When you say by we, it's the fire department. Someone's going to refer.
No, there's a handshake deal, or, oh, we have to take care of you guys, you help us out. And it hasn't really worked out the way that it was intended from our end, right? But most of the calls I go on are medical. I've been on one destruction fire and a couple wildfires. The vast majority are medical.
But are you trained as an EMT? So, see, that's what my daughter is, and she's a firefighter. And they think that's what they're saying will happen.
Right, that's why they're going to try and.
That's what they're going to.
Too. But to take those classes and stuff, even if South Summit pays for it, right? Pays for the class, that's months out of somebody's time. So as a volunteer, I'm going three, four nights a week after I work, after I come and do this. So it is, it is up in the air about whether or not that's actually going to work with volunteers. I would hope so. I mean, we had 20-some guys start in January, and I think we're down to like six or seven of us that actually are still there, really.
Well, like Geez said, if we can get them, we'll take them.
But you're going to, you're going to run into those cops, whether you.
Right, but currently, the fire department, the Summit County is the one providing the ambulance, the EMS, the EMPs, they're the ones collecting all the bills, they're the ones paying the bills. And also, Summit County's building is going to Park City and saying, hey, we're going to give you all this money and control, you got to send ambulances out to the other two districts. So that's currently what's happening now. The county is the one in charge of EMS. It's not Park City, but the county is contracted with Park City to send ambulances to us. It all comes through dispatch from Park City and that kind of a thing. So with South Summit taking control, it's good, because it's us, like you said. But I think this first year is going to be pretty similar to the way it's been, because Park City's the one that's been sending. And if we contract with Park City to run it for the first year or two, I don't think it's going to be a whole lot different.
I'm training for two or three nights a week for a semester.
Yeah, yeah.
But you know, this is the starting point.
This is, no.
Right.
We have to start somewhere. Look, I want to do this thing, I just don't want to be like, oh, we're the city, we're in a signed agreement, and South Summit Fire Department, you're in charge of it. Like Dave says, the buck starts with you commissioners, but you thought it was a raw deal, but I don't care, because you're the one that has to deal with it. That's why that, I just want to make sure the South Summit Fire Department's comfortable with what they're getting before we go, okay, here you go. Does that make sense?
So I think one thing that is important to remember is, it wasn't the district that forced this issue. It wasn't Park City that forced the issue, it wasn't Summit County, it was the fire district. It's, you shut it down your throat, so here you go. This is just a solution that hopefully will work for.
Well, and I would imagine we would want this to happen anyway. But now, we're just on a timeline.
It speeds it up more so than anybody would want it.
Right, well, I mean, to be 100% honest, and I've said this, I said this in the talk meeting, and I hope everybody, everyone of these guys knows, my position is, this should be a county-operated fire EMS system, that you should, there should be no South Summit Fire District, there should be no North Summit Fire District, or Parks and Fire District. There should be a South Summit, or a Summit County Fire Department that handles fire EMS for the entire county. Then you have one administration, you have all of those costs on one roof.
And this is.
This is the same thing that happens in any sort of district.
It's the same thing that happened in the Jordan School District, you know, Canyon School District now exists. Because you have, you know, that division of socioeconomic differences, right? You have Park City that, well, we pay these, we have these massive homes, we pay these massive taxes, and I don't want to subsidize Francis and Canvas and their argument. That's why this happens, that's why North Summit, South Summit Fire District is this. That's why, that's why there's this separation. Park City operates their own, because A, they can afford it, and B. They can afford it, and B.
They can afford it.
B, they can afford it, right? So that's, that's what it comes down to, it's territory, and it's, I don't want to feel like I'm subsidizing these services over there, you guys should pay for your own. And that's, that's what it's about.
Well, and I think personally, I think that's why we get the raw deal, because we're not Park City. So if the county was running it, my personal opinion, the county is Park City. Like, most of the people on the council. Like, most of the people on the council are from Park City, most of the people in, in positions of power over there are from Park City, like, my opinion is, and so I'm really happy that this happened, because it sounds like I've come to the table in good faith, to try and actually work out a good agreement. But I would want Summit County in charge of us over here, because that's basically what's been happening.
Yeah, but you gotta consider, like, right now, Summit, Summit County's in charge of your law enforcement, and you're, you're getting it at zero dollars.
Yeah, but we don't, but half the time we have, half the time we don't have a sheriff in the valley, even though we're supposed to. And I know that, I know that, I've been told that by people, that, no. Well, when, when I got told by a canvass police officer that they had to come over here to Francis on a call, because the Summit, the sheriff was over on the west side having dinner with the other deputies, that's a problem.
Well, okay, but, she just.
I understand that's where you work, right?
Yeah, and it's also the division I run, but, 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 um, the other thing you gotta be careful with is, Summit County isn't always, you're right, isn't always in this, but Canvas City doesn't handle anything, we handle everything for them.
Well, yeah, we know that there, for sure.
But either way, ultimately, that's the perfect scenario, is you have one department that runs everything, because then your costs are much lower. That will never happen here because of the politics.
Well, and that's the thing, by telling you it was fair, that would be fine.
And so South Summit Fire District, all this pushback from, from Tad Lowder is Tad Lowder saying, I want to do a fire department only and never do a EMS, that's his position, that's his stance, and so he's gonna fight every, he's on the, he was on the commission.
He is, he's not, he's not.
So he's.
He's, he's one of the commissioners, yeah, okay.
But, but his.
The one staying, the other two, Julian, Dave, they're the.
They're up for reelection.
What do you mean, stay there, not here?
Well, it's a given. No, no, there's.
It is terminated now.
Oh, it's terminated.
So his term of tax is not, the other two.
Because they were appointed, got it, okay.
But, but, but the reality is, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of politics involved in all of this push, and there, there's a lot of feeling that the fire department wants to remain a fire department only, but that's also not.
You know what, we're too big for that now, I'm sorry.
Maybe we're growing, they can't, we can't.
So, so I, I, I agree with, with Clayton in that this is the correct direction, it is, so the, the next best thing is exactly what we're looking at, and, and there, there are some details to work out, there are some things to work out. But Summit County, in my opinion, has done a really good job working with us, working with the districts. Maybe they could come up with more money, maybe they can't, I don't know necessarily, but the reality is whether it comes from Summit County, or whether it comes from the city, or whether it comes from the district, the money is still tax money. And it's, if, if, if Summit County decides they're gonna give them more money, well, that's gonna come from somewhere, us. And so, does, does anybody know how long the temporary contract is for?
That's, yeah, I was wondering that, I forgot.
The temporary contract with Park City?
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't exist, or.
No, I know, so, but.
But we need that.
That's, that's. We give it lock-in for like.
That's the part to this equation.
Well, I don't think, I don't think we can, we can know until we've decided that's the direction we're gonna go, and then, and then.
Well, this contradicts that, that the district is gonna contract with Park City for it by temporary.
Right, well, and so that's one of the concerns that I have, is they're trying to, they're gonna change that so we can contract with any district, or go across ambulances, for that matter.
Well, but yeah, but, so, but what is the, what's the trigger for that? When is it saying, okay, South Summit can now take it off?
When we sign the initial agreement, but that's the direction we're going, right? So, so we can't.
But this, but this has a twenty-year timeframe, Park City, or this county's gonna start giving money to the district starting very, starting January, which I have referred.
Only if we enter into this, though.
Right, but when can we, when can we tell Park City, hey, we're done? The, hey, the temporary contract gets put in place with Park City, for what time?
Yeah, it's.
What's the duration? That temporary.
That's, that's the other question, so that's, that's between Park City and the district to figure it out.
Right.
Okay, now, we got our ambulances, well, so, isn't this twenty twenty-five, when the ambulances are gonna be given to the city? No, that's.
Right.
That's.
Well, I thought it said twenty twenty-five.
Kidding, there wasn't twenty twenty-five, they didn't even, it does.
I read that's the one.
Oh, that's the, that's the extra money for the new ambulance.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
That's the, that's the, the newest.
It says here, within, within a hundred and twenty days of the effective date, they will give us two ambulances.
Yeah, and that's January, so you've got, so there's a six-ish month time period that Park City's gonna still be providing, you can tell the district if everybody agrees on this.
Right.
But it's not a.
So now.
It's just an unknown number, I'm not sure.
It's not.
Well, no, 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 no. No, it's, so they took that one provision out, but there's another one that says, whereas.
I know, that's the.
It's a mandatory provision, they say, that's gotta be pulled out. But, but no, that's not accurate, because what this is saying is that once you enter, once, once South Summit Fire District takes it over, they can't, it'll only be one ambulance that's funded. And that we have no staffing for any of that stuff, so there's going to be a contract with another provider, whether it's North Summit.
Gold Cross.
Gold Cross, whoever, that's, that, that contract's gonna get negotiated, and they're gonna actually be operating it, and South Summit Fire District's gonna be paying them, and that, that will last until they've got.
Until we do staff.
Right, so that, but that's, but that's where they're staffing, we're gonna enter into this contract, and then you city will then be responsible for anything we do.
Right.
So, so that could be, that could be hires, could be takers.
If you're Summit County, that's, if I'm a city, a county attorney, and I can get some, put that in, it protects the county. But if you're the city, it's like, wait a minute, should the county really be protecting itself from its constituent cities?
Well, I, I, I can promise you, I will not sign an agreement that says, uh, you agree to give us an open, uh, blank charter.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna do that.
Yeah.
Because, uh, we can't, but we, and they want the money by February. In the middle of our fiscal year, we're not, haven't even budgeted for it, I don't even know what the number is, and we're having even budgeted for it, because, you know, there's no control over the number either, they could say it's five million dollars, and how am I gonna argue that? Because you get hurt by that, it's cheaper, right, I mean, what the heck? There's no way I could leave that.
We signed all of our administrative meetings to Fiji. It is really expensive.
You're, jeez, though. So anyway.
Okay, so where we're at now, there is, the county's gonna send you the revised.
And then I'll just distribute.
And then, and then, but Brad's gotta review it.
Oh, for sure.
And we're gonna be able to do that before, on next week.
Yes.
Fourteenth, that's perfect. So then, everything looks kosher, and it's great, and blessed, it will be approved the next week.
Potentially.
Potentially.
And, but yeah, I, yes, so I'm not signing in with a lot of those provisions, and I'm not signing up for that because, yeah, you're safe.
Don't get down on yourself.
There's no way, so legal is one thing, right? Why is, well, yeah, but why is it illegal, are gonna be there, yeah, so we'll do, we'll, we'll look at both, right?
Yes.
This is legal, as it says.
Right, just not as far.
Right, right. Well, that's what you're gonna say is. That's why we made it to the big bucks.
I think we're good, I'll make a motion that we need to.
I'll send it now.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Okay, hold on. You have to talk less.
I know, you've talked way too long.